Join me in the Lord's pledge of allegiance.
Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not with temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, your power, and glory forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Peter?
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the adjournment and the adjournment?
No movement.
It's been moved until I have a second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Peter?
Yes.
Mr. Petra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Public participation will start at Brook Elementary.
So, last time I said that we were in the middle of our penny wars and we were super excited to see where we ended up. We ended up with two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. That is, we had another donation right at the very end of it. So that was our final count. And then Kohl's had their fifteen for fifty on the number six, so we got eight hundred and sixty dollars to add to that in cash. So, we have eleven kids that we are offering, or that we are providing Christmas for this year. They will have five days of clothes, tennis shoes, boots, a winter coat, a winter hat, a hoodie, some kind of either a tablet or a toy of some sort. Along with that money, we also were, had an anonymous donation of two brand new iPods with cases. So, if you have time, sometime between now and we leave for break, stop in our office, because I've put all the gifts out in the like, office part, not in the like, where the public goes, but in our office where we can lock it up at night, just to see. Because I wanted the kids to see what they, what they were able to raise and what it looks like. It is a huge quarter of gifts. And it's all, because I still have a few boxes down here from last week when I was in a virtual conference and I was wrapping while I was listening to the virtual stuff. It's, it's awesome. It's amazing. So, eleven lucky kids will be well blessed this year for Christmas.
Amazing.
And then we have all of our other normal Christmas crazy that's coming up, so we're pretty excited for that. But that was our big one, was the cult Christmas. And then our music program is December eighth. Eight. No, ninth.
Nope.
No.
No.
The eighth is a temper.
Okay. It's right. Are you sure?
Oh, it's on the ten.
I can tell you, I. Seven.
Seventh.
Seven. It's a Tuesday. Just had my date wrong. It is a Tuesday at six PM, so if you're needing something to do on a Tuesday at six, or at one, one twenty, because we're ending up in the whole school at one twenty. So, awesome times.
Okay, thank you. See Crystal Elementary.
We had our fall math IXL challenge, had sixty-two percent of our students participate in that. And we were able to do that with ice cream sandwiches and extra research, which went really well actually, so that was kind of good. We did have a penny war in honor of Carter Campbell, and we raised thirteen hundred dollars. We videotaped our Thanksgiving Day parade, which featured our STEM projects based on the book, "The Looms of the Broadway." So that is out in our dojo, and I believe James is going to put it on Rolling Hills YouTube today. We are planning a tools packs training for the community and for parents. We still have spots open, so if anyone wants to participate in that, they just need to call the school. And we're starting to do our benchmark testing in December. So, we're working hard.
Okay. Middle school.
So, a lot of things going on at middle school. First, I've actually been here for, in the district for twenty years. We used to have parent teacher conferences in November. It's actually the one where we had the most parents come in, and not all like negative, like some people think parent teacher conferences are. It was a little positive. There's a lot of people, it's nice to see them. I think we're finally out of that stigma of COVID not coming into the building and stuff, and they're, they're finally coming back. Two of our after-school groups have taken some trips, which is another nice thing we're putting back, getting kids out, some learning experiences at places. The Science Club visited the Carnegie Science Center and had a great time. We'll have great pictures on our Facebook feed for that. And the Makers Club, which is growing, a large part thanks to Sarah Burris, visited Jurassic Park and went through one of their educational programs. We want to congratulate Mr. McCon and all three of the MMS bands for their winter, or their, sorry, their fall concert, which was this past Monday. It was actually the first concert by a band at Meadowbrook in the past, it was almost two years, because of all the situations with COVID and restrictions and, you know, attendance and stuff. So, two of the groups on stage had never performed before on the stage as far as, in the band class, and they did really well. And then the last thing is that we had to get creative as we're providing for some of these families for the cult Christmas. And at Meadowbrook Middle School on December tenth, you'll have the biggest thing since Ally and Frazier. And it's called Kazzel's Ender. And now it's calmed down. There's no boxing match going on. We're all right. These two are rather competitive, and, 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 first of all, they lob each other, but you know, the love, love, hate thing. They like to beat each other in certain events. So, we decided to incorporate that as part of our raising funds for this thing. We're having a change drive, or as it's turning out, a money drive, because these kids really want to see what the end result is. They each have a bucket, and they are trying to convince kids to put money in the other's bucket, because whoever has the most money will take a pie in the face in front of the entire student body. Now, I'm not saying it's very popular, but we hadn't even set the buckets out yet, and as parents came in to sign on some kids yesterday, they actually started donating as well. So, apparently there's a lot going on. So, one of them will get it, and on December tenth, we're collecting money from next Tuesday all the way till December eighth. I think it was a couple days ago. And again, that's for the program where we're going to provide. I think the middle school has ten kids that we're providing for here this Christmas, which in twenty years is one of the best things, one of the programs we've done, so. That's it.
Since you have a program, we'll leave these two next. Jude, you're up.
Yes, I'm quick. Thank you. I, I just wanted to share with you all that we were blessed to take a team of eight representatives. Shelley kind of referred that she was part of our virtual. We had an opportunity to attend Ocalicon Conference last week. It was offered for four days. And a team of highly qualified special ed teachers, administrators, and one therapist volunteered last spring, not knowing if it would be in-person or virtual. You know, we were obviously hoping for in-person, because, you know, that's a time that we get a lot of ideas. But this was again, due to our pandemic scare. We were offered this online. So, this team of eight really went above and beyond. And it, what this conference is, and I, I wanted to tell you a little bit about it, because it's, it offers a variety of sessions that target disabilities, autism spectrum, sensory order disorder, low incident disabilities, behavioral challenges, emotional concerns that we're seeing at, in every one of our buildings. So, our principals did a wonderful job of getting with their staff, sending the right people, and that's, that's key. Those people invested a couple of days, some of them more days than others, because they have subs. Others said, can't go, because they don't have subs. So, I was really impressed with how they, some of them went ahead and attended as much as they could. But the great thing about an online thing is that we can view these things for up to the next thirty to sixty days. So, we are blessed that way. But these representatives attended this PD opportunity, and then they're going to take it back to their buildings. So, we had every building represented. They're taking it back and sharing it, whether it's at a staff meeting, whether it's through a Google Slides. I have a couple people doing Google Slides. Some of them are just emailing different people ideas, ways to serve our staff, our students, and our families on ways to help students in that area. So, Ocalicon, it's normally in Columbus, so we're really hoping next year we can send another team up there to get this information and bring it back to our Rolling Hills district. But if not, we made the most of it, and we thank you very much for supporting our staff on sending them to PD.
Thanks, thank you. Molly?
I need to go next. Hers is going to be. So, instead of doing a regular update, I thought I'd do something different this month. High school education's changed so much in the last ten years, and I hear people say that all the time. Most people don't even really realize what high school education looks like now. So, I'm just going to kind of give you a snapshot of what we do. Ideally, you know, when we were all in high school, focus was just graduating. You know, unless you were going to college, nobody really even talked to you about what you were doing afterwards. That's completely changed across the state, and especially here at Meadowbrook. It's really kind of an exciting time, you know. Schools across the state are experimenting with different ways to get students prepared for post-secondary success. You hear some of the things we do, but you know, it's really, they'll end what we do on a day-to-day basis. So, I went too far. Really, we tell students, you've got three options, college, workforce, or military, and everything else breaks down from within. Like I said, it used to be, you were kind of forced into a box, right? You were, everybody was encouraged to go to college. And if you didn't, it was, well, let's just get you graduated and get you out of here, you know? We've moved past that and tried to provide parents and students with all three options and all the things that come with it, and they're equally encouraged in here towards what the student needs, and then of course, the economic and regional data that we collect that goes along with it. So, for those wanting to go to college, our college pathway is set up for students looking to get a head start and those still needing time to prepare. Students can take college prep classes throughout their high school career. They're offered at each grade level. Or if they want to start earlier, you know, the Colt College, which we've talked a lot about, is really a college within a high school. There's been more than forty courses offered in Colt College, and there's multiple options each, opportunities each year for students to test into it. These are all of the schools that we have an MOU with. MOU, Zane State, Washington State, Stark State, Michigan, and Kent. We have an MOU with Kent, but we haven't offered anything from them. And we currently have more than eighty-five students taking at least one college class right now. And more than fourteen graduated last year with the equivalent of at least one years, one-year worth of college already gone. Of course, that's paid for. That's where I'm pushing my steps on main financial. You know, get yourself together, let's say about ten, twelve grand.
In retrospect, one of it was my daughter, who, who, they gave her a year credit at Meskingham for everything that she took through Colt College, and that saved me over forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's my focus on, you're going anyway. Get it for free.
Right, yeah.
We also provide one-on-one counseling to every student in the building twice a year. That's whether they're college or career bound. Once again, it used to be mainly a college thing, but we've, you know, that's changed. We host college fairs every year with colleges. We, you've seen the career fairs we've hosted. And we also host a financial aid and scholarship night to help parents get a start on the process. Also, we have the award ceremony each year, which students get upwards of eighty thousand dollars each year in awards, so scholarships and grants for college and post-secondary schooling. Pathways is one of the newer things. Now, you can graduate based on a pathway if you've taken tests or gotten industry-recognized credentials in that pathway. So, this is something we really put in place about two years ago. When a student enters high school now, we ask them to choose one of these four pathways. Of course, we're always looking to expand that, but that's a, that's a teaching staff issue more than anything. And it breaks down beyond that. But when they come in, we ask every student in the building, if they're freshman year, pick one of these four. They start out in that pathway until they either find a way to graduate another way or choose another path. And really, it provides them an opportunity to prepare for a career and receive those credentials, but it's also a fallback for graduation if other things fall through, right? And we've had to use that already. Better, it provides exposure to career information and experience that, you know, one time you just didn't get in high school. If they decide they want to stick with the career route, you know, we've got, we can go further down this road, you know, really, we've got four options, you know? When I got here, you know, Colt College was booming, but we just started kind of looking into the careers. Really, as a state, that's where we were. We've really focused on that. We're also involved in all these workforce and economic meetings and, you know, collaborations, trying to get ahead of that curve. So, we were really beyond most schools when the graduation, new graduation requirements came in. But now, we have really four options for kids that want to go straight into the workforce. There's Mideast, which we've discussed, you know, and you know a lot about. The pathways, the Belmont Initiative, and pre-apprenticeships. We take multiple trips to Mideast every year, you know, they come and present to our students. The pathways, as I mentioned, there's four specific ones that break down. If they stay in those pathways throughout high school, they graduate with hands-on experience in the field, contacts in the field, and those credentials that can be used so they can walk out right into a job. For instance, next week, week after next, we have forty-some ag students, and we've got two groups that'll end up being closer to ninety. That'll be OSHA ten certified. We've got the BICom, the safety group from BICom coming in. They're going to OSHA certify all of our ag students. Every student CPR certified every year. We have Adobe certifications looking at that in personal training next year. And these are approved through the state, you know, and they've lowered the barriers so you don't have to be eighteen to get these, and the kids can come right out of school with them. The pre-apprenticeships are kind of a new thing in Ohio education, especially in this area. We did begin this four years ago with the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union in Cambridge. Those students go one day a week, all year, and when they graduate, they're guaranteed a job in that union making twenty dollars an hour to start off with. We're working with East Central Ohio ESC to add more, and the new Career Navigator will be a big part of that. We only have about eight or nine kids do that every year, but man, that is such an amazing deal.
I would have loved that.
Oh, isn't that awesome?
I would have loved to have that opportunity.
Yeah, one day a week they go and they work at the union hall there on the east side of Cambridge. And when they come out, they just go right into the job. If students haven't found what they're searching for with those, college, Mideast, pathways, apprenticeships, or the military, we have the new Belmont Initiative, which is one day a week. We bus students to Belmont, and there is a welding and STNA program. They're adding more to it, but right now it's a welding and STNA program. When they finish it, they get twelve industry-recognized credentials, which guarantees their graduation. So, we ensure the ones that may have fallen through the cracks in the past graduate, but we also give them something they can go out and make money with right away. We mainly got welding this year. We had some STNA last year, and they really want to expand this, and it would be great if they do.
So, those students now, what's STNA?
Oh, it's nursing.
It's low, it's an RN and an LPN. It's a state-trained nurse.
State-tested nursing assistant.
Yeah, there you go.
It's, it's your entry.
It's right, look at you, man. Yeah.
Yeah, it was on, wasn't it? I'm the only one, one of the answer to that, but. I didn't know what, I couldn't remember what it stood for. I knew it was nursing. Yeah, they, they actually went into this year, they wanted to do five different things that, because it's been a year of success. And it's, it's students that didn't want to go to Mideast, but really didn't have any reason to stay at, at the high school. You know, and that's really who's falling through the cracks in all of these high schools. And it's, it's filling that, but we need more opportunities for them, because not every kid wants to go into welding or STNA, you know? But it's growing. Just a couple things to wrap up. Advisory is huge. We have this third period every day. It's been going on. Yeah, since Keith.
Yes.
Provides opportunity for us to teach soft skills, bring in industry and school speakers, create resumes, apply for scholarships, and work on the Ohio Means Job Program. Cassie Stevens created this, continues to run it, schedules it, does an amazing job with that. And they go to that every day, and we put all of our, all of our college and career prep stuff into it. That's where they do their CPR training, you know, it's, it's impressive what she's done with that. We've also started, you know, one of my focuses this summer is how can we, you always put college on a pedestal, you know, look at these kids that got thirty on their ACT. But we don't say anything about the ones that are going into a career from the home school. You know, that's normally safe for Mideast. So, we come up with some ideas, and obviously we want some more, but these are a couple signs I got from Herff Genus. We're going to put pictures of students in it, you know, students that got the most industry credentials, along with students that got twenty-five or higher on their ACT. We're starting this year twenty-one or higher, but I'd like to raise the bar on that eventually. And then, the Career Navigator position, we're kind of in between on that right now, but that's going to be huge for all of this. And I didn't want to go through all this without mentioning, these two are the heart and soul of all the career and college stuff we do. These are our counselors, Chris and Karen and Shannon Watzner, and they, they are amazing with all this. So, I didn't want to not mention them. Thanks.
That will go to Molly.
Okay, so, as you can understand, this takes a lot of organization to be able to go through all this college and all this career and all the graduation pathways. So, I've been working with the counselors and supporting with counselors and the high school to make sure they can organize all this information. So, I love spreadsheets a lot. So, they make things efficient and effective. So, we've been working for a long time to create these. As you can see, I'm going to slide through. This spreadsheet is huge. It's got lots and lots and lots and lots of data. So, the counselors put all their data on this one spreadsheet for college and career. But then what they can do is they can now sort that by student. So, the drop-down menu up at the top that has this graduated student's name, they can choose that student or another student that might have been there. So, they can pick this, pick the kid, and it will automatically show which classes they have in fall, which classes they have in spring. So, they know which school it's with and which classes they have. So, it's very easy, if they're looking at a student, to figure out and be able to talk through that with the student, with the parent, or if they're talking to the counselor, whatever they need. They can also see on this screen, all that information that was put on the first tab. They can see how many students are enrolled in every single college and every single class. And if they need to know who those kids are, they can scroll down here, and they can see, okay, in college comp with Stark State during the fall, these are the kids that I have enrolled. So, with just entering information on that front screen, they get to see all this information organized and easy to see. So, when anyone has a question, which by the way, this is last year's, so that way you can, the data's not as fresh. I just wanted to show you that. So, it's a really nice way for them to have the data organized, and so that way, they're just putting data in one place. We can take one and pass it down. And they can see everything they need to about college. But as he said, career is also extremely important, too. So, we have a graduation tool that we also created. So, I made this spreadsheet along with the counselors, and they've told me everything they ever wanted to see on a spreadsheet, all the data that they have to collect. And there's nothing in the state that does this, that puts all the pathways, puts all the college credit, puts all the graduation requirements, which change every single year. So, everything is listed in this one. Now, this is fake data. These are not real kids.
I was like, oh, Zane, I'm like, wait a minute.
You go back one screen.
These are, these are scientists. I was like, I got this on there.
I saw, I saw both Dudley girls and abnormal psychology.
Okay, so.
Sure they are.
One of the things this does for the counselors is if they put the data in, which I'm just going to scroll past this so you can see, that they put information such as IPs, five oh fours, if they're out of state, alternate assessment, their expected year of graduation, because that determines what graduation requirements they have. And then right here, this first box says, if it's met or not met, they can see instantly. And that automatically figures for them. I have formulas and things in there that will automatically tell them that. It also tells them about credits, competency. How do they meet competency? Because it's extremely complex. And Devon can attest to that. On how do you get that competency? How does it work? Is it MAP? Is it military? Is it through career options? And then the seniors, well, the juniors have to get SEALs. Seniors is a choice, but SEALs are another component of graduation. So, all of this, all these check marks tell them whether or not they've met these requirements. And it's all automatic. So, all they have to do is put the data in, and it solves it for them. So, they're putting in things like ACT scores, the end-of-course assessment scores, whether they took a CCP class in that test area instead. They just check a little box. They put in their, that's more ACT or end-of-course assessment scores. They put in military enlistment, competency. And this is that credentialing he was talking about, whether they took Web F, Web X exams and those credentialing courses, if they got a state license, say, from the welding. If they did a pre-apprenticeship program, if they did work experience, took the work keys, if they got the Ohio Means job seals. And a lot of these, like, Ohio Means job is on here multiple times. If they click it in one spot, it clicks in all the spots for them. So, they only put the data in once. So, as they're going, then here's all the SEALs that they have to have, which there's a lot of SEALs up here. And then the risk plan. The state of Ohio says that we have to have a risk plan and a success plan for every single student. The risk plan is only if they identify with a risk factor, and we determine what those factors are. And then success plan, we have to have for everyone. So, this is a way that they can mark if they've had a failure or some high absence rates, so they can make a risk plan, which I gave you a copy of one of those. They also can determine their career pathway here, and then they have a way to mark what classes. Like, here's the media arts pathway and all the classes that we have in that pathway. And then when they take their test, because that's how they get credentials, we can mark whether they passed or failed. That, and then it'll tell whether they met that credential or not. So, as long as the counselors go in and mark the data, it'll automatically solve it for them, because this is a lot of information. So, here's all our different pathways, and then they can put notes. And there's also things like, if they're out of state, they can get an exemption. If they have an IP, they can get exemption. If they defer graduation, there's exemption. So, we have to make sure we mark all of that. We also, right now, you can see contact information. We have two forms that all of our students fill out that have contact information, because that's something we need to know after they leave, more information about what happened next, so that way we can get ahold of them. We also have things like, what career do you want to have? If you go to the military, which branch would it be? Do you have support at home? And who is it? And how do they support you? So, there's a lot of things in those surveys the students take each year that the counselors go into the advisory periods and talk to them about. And all that data pours into here from that form, and I'll show you where in a second. Also, PE. You don't have to take PE anymore. You can do two year, two seasons of a sport. So, but PE is required. So, if you do sports, right here, this, this student, Oliver Einstein, took two sports. So, now he has a PE waiver, which means that he doesn't have to take PE. Because, there's a screen, when the counselors meet with the students, they go through all their credits from their transcript, and they mark every single credit. And they, with that student that had that PE, see how the box turned green? Because they marked football and track on the front screen, that turns green saying, hey, they got their PE waiver. So, they don't have to take PE. Same thing with, you see some fine arts credits are gray? That's because those students are Zane State, or Zanesville or Buffalo Mideast. They don't have to have fine arts credit. So, it kind of tells the counselors, hey, they're where they need to be, because they don't have to have it. So, all, if they mark it on the front screen, everything pulls in. They also put all their GPA and any notes here, so they can see if they've gotten their credits. So, then what do the students see? Well, they see the success plan. So, when, let me make this a little smaller so you can see it. When the students, which this is what I passed out to you, when the counselors meet with the students, they have this plan printed and ready to hand to the student, which you have a copy of in front of you of one of my makeup students. So, all they have to do is hit the drop-down button at the top, and all the students that are on the main plan show up. They can choose any student they want, so they can see their information. When they, and it changes automatically. They can see all the different requirements, credits, competency, and SEALs, and whether it's met or not. Because in the success plan, they have to tell them what they have not met and what they have met, and what they still have left to do. So, all the information's up there for the student and the parent. It automatically pulls all that information from the credits page the counselors made. It tells them what credits they have and what they're still missing. It tells them all their end-of-course ACT scores, their GPA, their pathway, if they've declared one, which they're supposed to. And it also gives them competency, because there's multiple ways to meet competency. So, they can see all the different things that they possibly have done. This student has met competency, because they've got ELA and BASS scores high enough. And it can see if they have SEALs. And remember how I said there's a form they fill out about their interests and their next steps? So, this student did fill out their form, so it has the top interest field, it's written right there, their personal career goal, and the post-graduation plans. Those are from the student's voice when the student filled out their survey. And the counselors, all they have to do is say, take the survey. It comes into the sheet and pulls into this document. So, they don't have to figure it all out and try to write it all out. And then they sign it and send it with the student, and the student signs it. And then that way, there's a record of what they've been doing every year, and the parents are also aware of what's happening. They also fill in the bottom, the counselors put down here, all the different activities that they're doing for college and career and workforce with the students every year, so that way they can see that. The risk plan, you have a copy of. So, if a student pulls up on a risk plan like this student did here, it's because of absence years or any failure, they can put in the comments why. it's because of absence years and any failure, they can put in the comments why. They can choose how they notify the parent or guardian of this risk and what they're gonna do with them and put the dates of when that happened. And then they can choose what kind of support, like credit recovery or maybe they want to work on SEALs or they want to put up in a work-study program and they can put notes about how that's gonna happen. And they can sign this and send it home to parents. So all this comes from that front screen. And then finally, we have what's called a SEALs plan, which is the last page of your document. So the SEALs, every student starting with a junior class and down, has to have two SEALs. So the students fill out a survey, the one I talked about before, about the SEALs, where it explains what the SEALs are and they have to say, are they interested in it or not interested in it or maybe? And that's what this column is right here for interest. And then when they earn it, it'll mark. So they can just change the name of the student. It'll say if they've met their SEALs, this one has not met it yet, he has a state seal, but he doesn't have the total met. But like you can see, he said, maybe I'm gonna do citizenship, but he already earned it because he got the right test scores. So it's a way for the counselors to be able to sit down when they meet with their students twice a year, because that's hard, to meet with every single kid twice a year. So they need that data in front of them. So just by keeping up with the internal test data and all the information that they have, they have this tool at their fingertips to be able to pull risk plans, success plans, and SEALs plans. So it's a lot of work, but we love it. So just wanted to share with you what the high school counselors and I have been working on for quite some time.
Much more complicated than it used to.
Oh, it's extremely.
I used to take, I used to take a handwritten grade card home. Dean Carter would sign it on the bus and I'd take it back.
And then the law changes every year. Like, I had to change this. It took me probably about five hours just to change the setup of it because they added in new things for graduation this summer. So, and I have to do that for every single class, because we have one for every class. But it's worth it.
We will move on to the Treasurers' report.
I need to get to our page, okay. I have approval of the minutes from October twenty-eighth, approval of financial report for October. Approve the now certificate for valid purchase orders greater than three thousand dollars. These are some normal ones. The past one, that ECO, they bill weird. So that's from like the summer and that's Willow branches when they come in and I get state money back. But because of how they bill, there wasn't a PO because they bill during the summer and POs don't start until July. So that's why that's on there. But for Willow branches that are coming in, it's not part of their regular bill. I recommend transferring the calling funds from the general fund to bond retirement and athletic support fund. Again, that's the one that would pay the coaches out of and band support fund. Approve the Titan electric sales agreement as presented. We are locking our electric rates in for four years, which is probably a really good thing right now with everything skyrocketing. So we will have a set rate for four years. Then authorize approval, this is for change orders, for Scott and I to be able to do change orders for the building project.
Do I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' report?
Motion.
I have a second.
Sir.
Any discussion on any of the items? Rule call.
Mr. Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Samuelton?
Yes.
Are there anyone who has anything to say on any of the standing committees?
We met on the building of grounds there, we met there, what, last week, Mr. Hage?
Yeah, last Monday.
Yeah, about four, last Monday, that was.
Four hours.
What all we discussed there, it was a four-hour meeting.
Student activity building and then going into a building project.
Oh, we had. Basketball's underway, athletic buys and, remember, the Colts come out with a nice win last Saturday.
Yeah.
Pitch models for his career wedding.
Yes, yes. And it was against Cambridge. Makes it a little sweeter.
All sports are finished and all of our teams did really well during the fall sports. That made it extremely well. All right, we'll move to superintendents for the old business.
We do have one old business we need to, I propose to accept the change retirement date for Beth Wesson to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, and it was?
It's February twenty-third or something weird, wasn't it?
Yep.
It's been a screwy deal.
This is, I have a motion to change her retirement date. I have a motion.
Second.
A second, I have a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Samuelton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent recommend the following people for employment, won't name them all, but they're there. And the, obviously the rest of the agenda. Accept the following retirement from Jeanette Darlene Curry, which will be effective at the end of this, this year, twenty-twenty-one. See, approve the early graduation application as presented. Also as presented, approve the NEOLA update. And to approve the following donation from the Guernsey Power Station of over ten thousand dollars, which was sent to pay off student lunch debt.
Can we have one more second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. And now, non-renewal fall coaches for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Do I have a motion to accept?
My turn.
Items A through F.
Motion.
I have a second. Discussion on any of the items.
I just have a question. I see you've got some school brush drivers in here. What's the situation on that? Are we, are we getting some?
I think we just recently got two subs.
We did, two.
We still have, at least, we still have two or three out on sick leave currently.
Yep.
And we're gonna start to be able to cover the thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, rule call, please.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Samuelton?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Do we have any correspondence?
No.
No information available?
Nope.
We need to go into executive session to discuss personnel and contact. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Home.
Motion to go in. A second.
Second.
I have a second. Rule call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Samuelton?
Yes.
Seven oh three. There will not be any business after.
Thanks, guys.
Executive session, so feel free to stay or feel free to go home to enjoy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.